The time for just signing. Mr. Houston, you're. And you turn to take forward the office.
I raise the red name. I state your name.
I. Nancy Lee.
The town is where?
The town is where?
Then I will support the Constitution.
I support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And then I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of.
duties of office of.
Sheboygan County Board of Commissioner, District Number Four.
And for District Number Four.
And in for the County of Sheboygan.
And for the County of Sheboygan.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you. Bring some of the item five, you have to include the agenda. And any additions or additions. And we have a motion by Commissioner Newman, supported by Commissioner Waterfield, to approve the joint case.
Okay.
Is that a roll call though?
Yes. Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
It's me.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenster?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
That's approved. Now we can sign item six to consent the agenda. Any questions, additions from that? It's not updated, makes no proof.
Mr. Chair, uh, just, uh, started on page fifty-three. We see CD.
Yes.
And the man, sir, needs to be a correction there that Commissioner Newman's absent. From that meeting, he was there and what is yesterday at the meeting, uh, they agreed to correct that. Just to. Just prepare in the man's.
Any other directions? If the bill is only made into the. Or that would change them. To.
Make that motion.
Or. That motion, right here. Commissioner Claremont, supported by Commissioner Olson. To approve, you consent agenda, Adam, please.
Commissioner Stenster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
That motion carries. I bring this on item seven, we citizens comments, three minutes. Want to address the board, please go to the podium.
Listen, you like to come up and say something?
Yep, yep.
Well, I'm in the right spot.
Yeah, he got three minutes at this.
Okay.
In this ten minutes.
Well, luckily I have three. I'm Charles. I'm a local historian for the lakes of our area. I've been doing research for about twenty-five years on the Native Americans in our area. Well, what I discovered was a. It's been answered, it's zero, now a nine thousand year old, uh, caribou hunting drive on the Sheboygan Town. Seven miles long, goes all across another township. What I want to do, I don't know if we could get a historical landmark or. Put on that, I don't know, we even in the right. Right group here. To talk about that, but this, this, this trail date back to seven thousand B.C. Uh, it has two, it has three trapping locations on it. It's a straight, it's a straight trail. The first trail, the, the first one mile. They drove through a snare area, the second, how they drove into a bog lake. And the third, uh, third track location, they drove into a corral. I know, I guess I'm taking off along again, although this is talking about the. A couple of that, but now, now what I've been doing, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, staying twenty-five years. And just in twenty twenty, trying to figure out the perfect, the street, the continued trail throughout. That I went in a, in an archaeological survey on. GPS mapping. One's an Osceola County, it's four miles long. And this one's actually twelve miles long, but the northern half, close to the Osmond Township. Is a, uh, a caribou hunting drive. Where they drove here. Something.
Well, again, I don't think this is, uh.
I, I don't think.
Could, uh, could. Do the whole of them be in the figures, what would we hear there? If that is, if that would make a lot of sense to make some of the story might have been changed, I guess, so we all agree.
Yeah, if, if I get your, uh, name and the contact information, uh, happy, your case. So I can call and talk to you with more about it.
Yeah, I took all my research, I've actually made two, there's two books on it, Neo-Heritage here, it's in our local area, it's not.
Yes. Yeah. If, yeah, if you just have your information, Jeff will get that back with any, we can look through some.
See what you can talk about, if you, the conversations, the.
Yeah, I've been working with, uh, just. The state of Michigan's, uh, Director of Archaeology, Lanson. She's directing it to another, uh, archaeologist that's in charge of France.
With that, if we get some information, this back to the. Proves to be something that we could, we need to consider a resolution as a board or something through that.
It's more. They, 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 it'll create more, uh, shorter than possible, you know, they've got something else on the bottom of the. Um, sure. Thank you.
Anyone else on the public? Not that. Well, we don't, if you have any business, no business came for us today, it's financial, you're in the work, it's on one oh four, one oh nine, United.
Yep, it's my. Uh, we're doing a month February, um, revenue, uh. February twenty eighth of twenty-five, six hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars in payments, or. Four point, four or five percent of the budget as compared to the year prior. Six hundred seventy-eight thousand, sixty-nine dollar one cent, or five percent of the budget. That's an increase of eight thousand eight seventy-seven fifty-nine, or pretty much on target than the same as prior month. For a year. Um, items over twenty-five thousand, um, there's a few lines, one oh one, four hundred, four oh one, the current tax is up sixty-seven, sixty-two thousand, six oh seven, seventy. And that variance is related to increases in taxable value and timing difference, they don't, they're collected and received by the governor. Uh, the one oh one, four hundred, six seventy-four, state revenue sharing, is down eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, that's a timing issue. Um, we received the payment in February of twenty-five, and we have received it in March, I don't. February of twenty, uh, I'm sorry. One oh one, four hundred, six seventy-four, state revenue sharing. Um, it's down eighty-one thousand, um, and that's a timing difference, um, we recorded it in February twenty-four, and. Twenty-five, we recorded in March, so we'll catch up, was actually a little bit higher than last year, but. Uh, the next one is one oh one, four hundred, six oh seven, oh four, charges for services, that's down forty-three thousand, um, the reason that's down, meaning that we get ten percent. Childcare admin fee, that we did not book, um, in January, February, I caught that error, so we will correct that in March. Um, we haven't received it from the state, and they didn't get booked, they didn't receive it either, so, um, that will be corrected. Um. So it's not really. Um, one oh one, eight forty-five, five four, uh, state grant, that, that is, uh, forty thousand dollars, and that is the dog park, which obviously we need to get in twenty-four. Expenditures mark, uh, February twenty-five, two million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars, fifty-eight cents, for twelve point six eight percent of the budget. As compared to a year prior, two million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and six cents, for eleven point nine eight percent of the budget. Which is an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand, seven eighty-eight, sixty-two. There's a few departments that are up. Um. Department one thirty-six, District Court, one forty-eight, um, Probate Court, three fifty-one corrections. Um, and they're all due to, um, there were three pays in January as compared to only two in the year before, so this is kind of an accumulated and we'll catch up when. I believe in March of last year, we had the three pays, so we'll start getting more in line. Um, three oh one, the Sheriff's Department, it was down a hundred and seven thousand. Um, part of it, they wasn't increased because of the three pays, but there's a decrease because last year we, um, they bought the hundred and seventy-five thousand worth of vehicles, so it's making that difference. Um, Department three fifty-one. Oh, we said that, I'm sorry. Uh, Department seven twenty-eight Economic Development, that's up fifty-six thousand, and that's due to when, um, NLE, NLEA was paid. In twenty-four as compared to twenty-five, so that's not really a difference either. Um, and then nine oh two, the transfers is down fifty-seven thousand. Um. And I, the main reason is in twenty twenty-four, we had a significant more institutional childcare costs that we had to pay. And this year. We're, we're not having that, so, or at least the state hasn't built it yet, they, and they're less. Um. The other report, catch summary by one. Um, the general fund, February twenty eighth of twenty-five, eleven million, two hundred ninety thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars, twenty-one cents. As compared to a year prior, ten million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, twenty-seven cents, or an increase of nine hundred six thousand, six oh two ninety-four. Total fund balance, um, cash balance, I'm sorry, thirty-six million, eight sixty-nine, eight fifty-seven, sixty-one of February of twenty-five. Compared to the year prior, thirty-one million, nine forty-one, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents, or an increase of four point nine million, a little change. Um, auditors were supposed to start fieldwork. This past Monday, with the emergency management stuff going on here, they've been working remotely this week. Uh, they're supposed to be here next week, but I had a discussion with them yesterday because. Jaffe and I have some issues we need to get done for. Cost estimates, so they may be remote next week too, um, hopefully they'll be on site the last week of April. Um, they've been prepatient with this, uh, thing going on up here, so.
What would you actually do when timing the.
Working, I mean, I had most of the stuff, so they are doing some remote work with it, um, but. When they are here, they need me a lot, and I put them, I'm not sure when I'm going to be available, certainly since the twenty-third is when we have to hurry to die. So they're talking amongst themselves whether they want to throw up here or not, or just hitting the work to remote them. But we have a June thirty deadline, I don't think the table is, so we have to use it too. Any questions for me?
You post some questions. Perfect. You should not review, you want to receive the file.
Make a motion, receive the file.
Motion, make, Commissioner Claremont, supported by Commissioner, you can receive the file. You vote for it.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenster?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Bring sound item ten, administrator for.
Yeah, update on a couple of items, um, like the, the chair for us, again. For the response, for the emergency, also with, uh, Crunstrom and, and all the staff. Uh, right now, we're partial EOC, uh. Getting updates, all the staff are still moving forward on their accomplishments. Uh, as, as Sue stated, right now, we're working with, uh. Lieutenant Crunstrom and the State Police Division to, uh, get cost estimates from each unit's organ, uh. To submit in for FEMA review. Uh, so they've given us a very short window, again, between now and next week to, uh, get all, uh, initial damage assessments in, and then supporting paperwork as much as possible. On those, and so right now, I, I believe the number is somewhere potentially ten million dollar damage range. Uh, a lot of that is debris in the right way, and, uh, we'll be working with the, the units here to get that information together, presented to the State of Michigan. Uh, there'll be a FEMA review sometime in the next few weeks, and then, uh, we'll see if Washington issues some funding. For the storm. So this is going on in each county right now, uh, some of the largest damage are appropriate like the coal ops. Which will be recorded in the, the county that their, uh, home station's at, so. Preskill, that'll be Preskill County, uh, for Great Lakes Energy, it'll be actually a Toronto County. Uh, consumers, it's, it's not electric, coal, that's our, our status right now, where we're, uh, at and working. Relates to storm recovery. As far as some other projects here, uh, our, just our circuit court projects, uh, pretty much. Almost completed now, if you, uh, go in the courtroom right now, uh, all the carbon handling, uh, ten, we're putting up the electronics back in the courtroom. On Monday, uh, we have, uh, street sharing glass, or scheduling, I mean, replace windows for the, for the courtroom here, so we'll have a. We'll throw a hole there in the, the window for a few hours, uh, that also give us an opportunity. To install some new glass in the building and see what the energy efficiency, the aesthetics of that will, so as we plan for. Uh, replaces the rest, you know, the, uh, windows here in the, what I call the horseshoe area, nothing about Ohio State, but, uh. Eventually, we have the funding to, to, uh, exterior of the county building, place that in the. Uh, tomorrow, we do have a, a bid opening for the Dog Park Fence RFP. At two o'clock. And we'll review those numbers, caribou bid, and I'll bring that back to Lauren for, probably Lauren, if you're on the second. Have to answer any other questions?
Questions for the administrator. Seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, any reports, anyone have anything?
Just to come from quick updates on, uh, VA Subcommittee. Coffee hour was till, uh, last Wednesday of every month, it's moving, uh, from State Street location, the. K or the VFW is not moving because of the attendance, it's got, so they, it's moving to Great Lakes Trail, and then it's at, uh, nine AM. Uh, this, this next Wednesday, and then, uh, next, uh, week, twenty-fifth, is the Spring Social. It was hosted, uh, by the Chateau Lodge, and all veterans, and, uh, spouses, and all of the G men. Last year, we had a very good, uh, showing, and. And we mentioned, you can chat in game excellent jobs. Talking forward to six. What was the date again on that? Day twenty-fifth? Right, it's four to seven.
Any else? Any reports? Word matters, excuse me, bold business, item twelve, a resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six. Jeff, you want to? Continue to address that, it's pretty standard.
Yeah.
So with that, will you motion to leave that resolution?
I would make the motion. Section.
And, s- motion from Commissioner Waterfield, supported by Commissioner Claremont. To approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six, and just for the public, that's to create an opioid settlement steering committee. That is a settlement that we've had. It's coming with this committee to, um, put that together. And of course.
Commissioner Newman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Eustace?
I'm just abstaining from that, because I, you know. You know what this is.
Unfortunately, I don't have that ability. Do you have a conflict, you been?
I, yes. Chair would like, I'll give a little bit more background. Yeah. County again was a participant in the, uh, ultra litigation across the country, uh, there were settlements that were. Raised across the country with, in, to double that. Which according to county, have a projected, uh, amount that would behave. Under the settlement of one point nine million. We've been receiving initially, uh, those funds. Uh, since twenty-two or twenty-one.
Twenty.
Yeah. And we'll receive them, uh, for eighteen year period of time. Uh, so the amount that we receive each year is based on. Settlements, facilities, and the companies, specifically, so you can think we have, but. With what, I have nine dollars right now, making the fund. And, uh, part of that, um, beneath the settlement. You can only spend funds in certain areas. Uh, recovery or education, could be housing. And part of the process is to form settlement steering committee to help advise the board, and, uh, spend this fund forward. So the stage you're remembering now is this resolution will. Establish the committee itself, there would be appointments, possibly up to three from the courts. Uh, will be one through education. Need to the other areas here, she weren't calling in Sheriff's Office, uh, Prosecutor's Office. Uh, behavioral health, treatment, healthcare provider, education, your support, stuff, so. Those are the areas that have representation. Take, uh. Oh, with applications for the areas outside the county board, and, and the board commissioner will appoint the committee. Committee's first mission will be to. Establish your plan, how we're going to do, the rest of the. Direct those under the settlement, such areas to direct funding. There's a, like, maybe, other groups. I've been, uh, this, this. Sure. Okay. That's good information, thank you.
Yes. And yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenster?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Hey, no new business, team board matters for discussion.
I do have a couple of things, uh, I turned to the Aloa and, uh, Polar Township meetings, uh, and a group of concerned citizens at Polar Township meeting. Uh, wanted to discuss the state's. I have a term as a proposal, which I talked to Jeff about it, he's aware on, uh, Sandy gravel aggregate. And how that, uh, state's proposing to, kind of change that, if I'm correct, Jeff, or if you're not. The state is looking to take that over, the control of that first, the, uh, townships and county, so. Group of concerned citizens in Polar Township meeting, uh, just want, just wanted to be aware of that, I intend on coming to do a presentation, second meeting of May. Uh, cotton reference, and, and their proposal. Uh, what, what, they can say, well, we actually think to a resolution.
Wasn't this in the Sandy gravel, something significant for this?
We, we talked about this now for almost a year and a half, uh, and it kind of. Throw them into the same bucket, if you will, with, um. Uh, solar, or solar farms, and also collective organizations power. Yeah, it has been taken priority, it has been taken, uh, in these first components, and now there's the push for round three, which would be. The gravel pits. And, um. It's just concerning to me that, uh, the amount of gravel that it takes for solar developments, and that's gravel that we need for a road place, and. As the demand goes up, as we all know, the cost is going to go up, so it's going to be painful for our road condition, and it also takes our. Local building to control the location of these operations, I think we have to consider for our neighbors. Comes a real plan, really, we need a planning, it's something, committee to make this decision, not somebody in Lansing, but. Kudos to the people on the Polar Township, township, for having your eyes on it, and I think we could, once again, at the corner. Take the third step, and stand in opposition to, you know, that, by way of, as we should, that would be something we need to consider, important. Uh, and, like you said, the group, and, uh, told them, and, um, coming to the second meeting in May. And then the second, uh, issue, same, uh, uh, group of people, they were concerned, and it's more of a, I guess, question for the OEM. Pretty ton of runs from Sheriff's Department, and there's, uh, their concern is because of the ice damage, the storm damage, you should say. Uh, they're concerned about the hazard it's going to create in our local woodland, woodland areas, uh, for forest. So they are. Wanting some kind of, uh, focus, so.
So I'm, I'm not waiting on that too. Commissioner Warfield?
I'm good.
Commissioner Newman?
I'll set the heat.
Um, I do, uh, back to that point, and I'm sure, uh, Commissioner Wallace will be here because it's his district, but. Uh, I think the importance of having these state parks open as soon as we can should be top priority to the state, because places like Bird Lake State Park are the economic driver to that township. You know, even like Aloa, I mean, it's quite, Bird Lake, those are so simple to get open, they're, you know, they want their soul and honor, asking for volunteers, but if you're trying to, the state can think the priority of bringing. So that's revenue for them to untie. And I don't know if there's anything we might send them to, or if there's something the board felt, or if it's, that's something. That we need to do, and I'll, I'll wait to talk to the chairman, we can do this next Tuesday, but I don't have it on the radar. Because I know, see, they're asking for volunteers, but, you know, when the state is, was, you know, when we offered just to get rid of the county road brush on the side of the state land, they were absolutely not, and it was just. Not, I mean, it's very fair, and I think it's very important in the trail safety, and I've already just had cancellations from my group coming from New York to go trail riding. Maybe fifteen, and they canceled, so. And that's the things I want to continue on, back to that, we'll address all that Tuesday. And then on the other thing, uh, just on the radar, again, I'll bring it back to you, there's more information, I know, um. I served on NIMs ago, and one of the things is, uh, again, I stand on in the current administration, but it's the federal funding on Head Start, and Head Start, because, you know, I, I support. Early childhood education, so I might, I mean, at the board, we consider maybe a resolution, we support, that's, I mean. As you know, we bought the West Side School here, which is a head start, you know, my history, so, my home, so. If there's nothing. Matter, uh, board matters for discussion, we'll move on to number fifteen, citizens comments.
Yes.
Hold on, second.
Um, regarding the second meeting in May. Uh, we ran into difficulty for that week ahead, there were too many commissioners at other meetings. And Jeff was gone in the last part of that week, so we were looking for the planning commission to be that second meeting of May. Which would conflict with Commissioner Claremont's. Individuals coming to present at that meeting.
It's because we already have a present.
Well, it'd be plant, it's your planning session. In May.
The group that was coming, I, I can make contact with them, but they were just looking at the board of commissioners' calendar, right?
Right, but we, we were trying to get that planning session, and I ran into difficulty. So the only day, and I have it tentatively scheduled with audits, contingent upon your decision today. And audits is limited because of a lot of events taking place.
Because we were going to do audits, make twentys, right?
Can't do that. Yeah, there's too many commissioners that are unavailable.
Yeah, when the chairman comes there.
When you'll make all that.
Yeah, but with, with either of those twenty-seven.
The twenty-ninth is unavailable, so the only day that audits is just that twenty-seventh.
So, yeah, we're just deciding if we'll have this Peter planning session the same day as the radar.
Good, public comments, three minutes.
Well, it sounds, friends, township, city's waiting, uh, do you want to express, uh. Uh, concern that. We have this, again, this national help that's here. Uh, and, um. We have huge. With the storm damage, we have few, uh, the three drains, we need to clean up. Uh, eastern drain, southern drain, and then the old Black River watershed. Uh. I do think that before all national bird, uh, uh, and state assistance is released from the county. That we need to. Have them send in and clear those drains of the fallen trees that are in there from the storm damage and. Subsequent, uh, other damage. And, uh, if you use professional pre-service company that's in there to clean up, uh, right away. For those drains, so. That no further damage can happen to those drains that flood the city of Sheboygan, townships of Benton and, uh. Townships of, uh, uh, Boebring and, uh, Dimperness. So, uh, this is the only way, saying that we need to, uh. Get done before the, all the state assistance and federal assistance is done. So we can get those, probably, probably figured, other than that, that's the same here, to use.
Wonder about, to, I just wanted to touch on the gravel pit situation a little bit. There's absolutely no oversight on these gravel pits in Acton, each one of them has tributaries that feed directly into the Pigeon River. They're in the water table, and there's nobody who can moderate it, sure, they're not moving, so please, as a board, if you can do something, though, to change that. They definitely need some oversight on them. So, make sure. Anyone else have a comment?
Uh, board member comments, any useful comments? I'm glad that others get fancy.
It's really your job on. Of managing that storm. Incredible. It's really a job on, on managing that storm, it's incredible.
Okay, um, well, I'm gonna have to reach over here to legal counsel from then.
You know, you can do a motion, or it doesn't have to be a motion, you're going to close session.
Well, you have, can you?
We have to recess until twenty.
Wait for our turn.
Oh, you, you, you can wait, you can meet her, but you can meet her if you want to, or you can do the motion now and then recess, doesn't matter.
What's your board's?
What time did you tell, Heidi to be here?
Eleven thirty.
If you. Is recess and then, and then, but the public is here now, so I would.
I'll close session, and then we'll recess.
No, you're, 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 all the motion does is authorize you to go on the close session, okay? Recess and then, like, eleven thirty, when Heidi gets here, you can, you can then not go into close session, you wanted to pass the motion.
Motion, right? Yes.
And I will, um, make the motion, taken by Commissioner Warfield, go into close session, it's a request of. Towny Administrator on behalf of the county, party to a collective bargaining agreement with the F O P, the union, who is actively engaged in contract and lease negotiations with the unions. Assuming to certain base, I'm seeing the open meetings at the N C L, if any, point three six eight, or C. I'll call for this.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Was there a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, man, pardon me.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stanser.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming, we're gonna go into hold session, and we'll be in a recess for a little while.
Oh, Eagle, that's not oversight.
Eagle has oversight.
I, I said, I have to, I have to, I feel sixty eight, I called because, uh, Phil didn't. I had to, so I called the county, thought it was, yeah, well, their solution, you know, whatever.